I call to order this meeting of Pasadena and Penn School District, Board of Trustees, in special session on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas, at 501. Board members present: Casey Phelan, Marshall Kendrick, Nelda Sullivan, Joe Campos, Paola Gonzalez, and me, Kenny Fernandez. Board members absent: Crystal Davla. Let the records indicate that a form of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that this meeting, that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code, Chapter 551. Invocation given by Casey Phelan, pledges by Paola Gonzalez.
Pray with me. To Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for each and every person gathered here today. We ask, Lord, that you be with us and this board as we conduct the business of the school district, protect us and guide us, and it's in your holiest and most gracious name we pray. Amen.
To the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honorable Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, Section 2, Public Comment. According to BED Local, there are none. Section 3 will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. We'll reconvene at the conclusion of executive session. We reconvene in open session at 5:18 PM. We now move to our administrative personnel. Do we have a motion?
That we approve addenda A through D.
Second?
We had a motion by Nelda Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd like to read the names of those individuals, please. Ms. Allison Posey. This is just for information only, but she had wanted to be here to be a cheerleader for her group, so it's a lateral move. Congratulations. Thank you. And do we have Letitia De La Santos? And how are you? Congratulations. Mrs. De Santos is approved for the position of counselor at Gardens Elementary School for the 2025 school year. And do you have family with you?
I do.
Congratulations. And Gloria Zavala. Ms. Zavala has been approved for the position of Behavior Specialist, Behavior Response Team in the Program Support and Achievement Department for the 2025 school, 2526 school year. And do you have family with you? Congratulations. Rachel Trader. Miss Trader has been approved for the position of Assistant Principal at Parkview Intermediate School for the 2526 school year. Congratulations. And do you have family with you?
I do.
There he is.
You were right on time, young man. And I forgot to say that Ms. Trader came to us from one of our neighboring school districts. We're delighted that you chose Pasadena. Is Aston Hagerty with us? Very good. She has been approved for the position of Assistant Director of Athletics for the 2526 school year. And she also comes to us from one of our neighboring school districts. We're delighted to have you. Congratulations. And do you have family with you?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And someone told me that you also hold a position statewide. Is that correct? Very good. Congratulations. We're delighted to have you in Pasadena. And that concludes.
Well, thank you again for all the newly appointed team members. We're excited to have you as part of this district. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move forward with the board meeting, but you're welcome to stay or feel free to step out to the lobby and take pictures and enjoy some fellowship with your family and friends. Congratulations again. We're glad to have you here. Congratulations. We look forward to great things. Hey, are you the one with the big budget?
No.
I'm a basketball drinker, so my eyebrows. You did call me out last time. Did I?
You offered.
I afforded it back at Marshall. Congratulations.
Went from a full house to seven people.
Yep. All right, this moves us to our Budget Workshop. Dr. Tamika Alfred Stevens, CFO, take it away.
Before Dr. Alfred Stevens starts, I just want to say that tonight she has prepared a presentation for you guys, and I want to thank her and her team for the amount of hours that they've put into this budget planning process. House Bill 2 has lots of moving pieces to it, and she has, she's really put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in it, and I can't thank her team enough for what they've done. I know that, that House Bill 2, we don't know all the rules just yet, but I know she has a plan for us and to help us, and so tonight she's going to show you several different options for our budget, but I want to just say thank you to you and your team, Dr. Alfred Stevens, we appreciate you.
Absolutely, it's totally my pleasure. Hey, Budget Queens, that's what I call them. They are truly my little lifeline. Help me be able to share important information with you all. So, good evening again, President Fernandez. I'm trying not to say President Phelan. I'm looking at you but thinking Phelan. So, President Fernandez, board members, and the remaining audience members that are here this evening. I'd like to take some time to go through where we are in the 2526 budget planning process as we prepare for the upcoming school year. As Dr. Lopez has just indicated, there are several moving parts that still remain as it relates to the implementation of House Bill 2. So, for tonight's conversation, I'm going to start with a quick update on House Bill 2 and its implications on our upcoming budget, and then I'll move into some raise options that I would like to get your feedback on so that we all know what to take into consideration. And then I'll close out with next steps toward the budget adoption process and answer any questions that you may have, okay? So, I'd first like to begin with, House Bill 2, as you already know, has required compensation increases, and those required compensation increases are noted here. As you can see, you should have the slide deck in front of you, but of course, it's on the screen. And you'll see here that it begins with teachers that have at least three years of classroom experience, classroom teaching experience. We are required to give them a $2,500 pay increase. And teachers that are three to four years, rather, I should say, of classroom teaching experience, and then classroom teachers with five or more years of experience, we are required to give them a $5,000 pay increase to their current compensation. And so, this new teacher retention allotment, of course, the funding is flowing through that particular allotment, and it's estimated that we'll get about $13.4 million to be able to pass along to our teachers that fall into those two groups. Also, the support staff allotment, that's a new allotment that was created under House Bill 2, and it provides $45 per student in average daily attendance for all other groups excluding administrators. And when I say all other groups, you'll see them noted there. So, teachers with zero to two years of experience in conjunction with everybody from a librarian to a bus driver, literally. So, all other staff with the exception of administrators. And administrators are characterized as individuals such as myself, so chiefs, principals, assistant principals, directors, executive directors. Those are individuals that are considered administrators, and they are not included. And so, we're estimated to receive about $1.6 million from the state for our support staff allotment. Again, that must be spent on compensation increases. And so, when you look at what we are getting from those two allotments alone, they total about $15 million that we're going to have to spend on compensation increases. Now, I want to pause for a moment to note here that House Bill 2 does not provide enough of an increase in state funding to even support a 1% raise for all of the staff members that are included in the support staff allotment. It does not provide, not even 1%, okay? And then I've already stated that the administrators are not even included in any allotment that the state is providing. So, we have to take that into consideration as we're budget planning. Also, as it relates to looking at like the maintenance and operations side of the House, the basic allotment did have a small increase. It did increase by $55. You'll see there that it's going up to $6215. $62, I'm sorry, $6,215. And of course, the basic allotment covers everything. I mean, from instructional materials to HVAC repairs to technology. It covers a wide range of expenses that we incur on a day-to-day basis. And then also, the new allotment, the fixed cost allotment, was created to help districts with those ongoing costs that we must sustain, that are like fixed in the budget. So, when you think about utilities, when you think about fuel, when you think about insurance, those are like quote-unquote "fixed" cost. And so, instead of putting that money in the basic allotment, it was set up as a separate allotment because we're going to have to spend that money on those particular items specifically. And that means it'll have to be tracked and coded as such. So, between those two allotments, we're estimated to receive about $4.8 million. So, when you think about the big picture here, from House Bill 2, we're projected to receive about $25 million in additional state funding for this upcoming school year. And from that $25 million, we are required to provide $15 million in compensation increases, not stipends, compensation increases. So, we'll have to sustain that $15 million increase from now on. And then that leaves about $10 million to account for the current deficit that we're projecting under current law, which is about $29.6 million. And also, to be able to take into consideration compensation increases as a whole. So, right now, what we are doing is we are continuously waiting on guidance to make certain that we are clear on what the expectations are as it relates to House Bill 2. Late last week, I believe it was Thursday, late Thursday afternoon, we did receive correspondence from the TEA that describes how we should look at teacher counts, who is defined as a teacher, and how that needs to be reported through the P E M system. But there's still work to do in making certain that we understand what system changes we need to make to make sure that information is correctly captured. Also, they provided guidance on who needs to be included in the support staff allotment group and how we're going to code that information. So, I'm sharing this because even though the law has passed, there's a lot that has to happen through rulemaking. There's a lot of training and understanding that has to take place. So, we want to make certain that we're making the best decisions based on the best information that we know to be true. So, that is still happening. And then finally, revised revenue projections. We know that we're projected to have increased homestead exemptions, and so, we want to make sure we account for that in the best way as well. Now, I'm going to shift into the raise options, and what I'd like to be able to do now is to present the six options, and then I'll pause and ask you for your feedback so I can make sure I make note of that feedback. And then I'll continue with the last part of the presentation, which is next steps, okay? So, for raise option 1, you'll see here that it includes, first of all, the two required pieces, which are teachers with three to four years of experience. You'll see there that they have, that $2,500 is required to provide them. And then teachers with five years or more of experience, classroom teaching experience, the raise amount is $5,000. But also included in this raise option are classroom teachers with zero to two years of experience. We're included a $1,500 flat amount for this group of teachers. Am I seeing your hand, President Fernandez?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt, but before we go into this, this is only, this funding is only for two years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
As of now, that's all we know of?
Yes, so let me be clear. So, we're going to get this $25 million for this year and have to spend $15 million on raises. And then the next year, in the 2627 school year, which is the second year of the biennium, we're going to get another $25 million and have to do this same exercise by giving classroom teachers these required compensation increases. Yes, so for two years straight, we'll have to do this exercise. Am I answering your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, so... So, that bill did pass. He's speaking of the legislation related to changing the special ed funding model to an intensity-based services model, but that will not be implemented until the second year of the biennium. And they have not worked out what that's going to look like yet. We don't know what our projected allocation is going to be. I mean, I think it's a great thing, though, because we know that those services can be extremely expensive. So, but we won't feel the impact of additional funding to support our immediate needs until the 2627 school year.
I guess my point of that was in two years from now, we're looking, we could possibly be looking at a minimum of $25 million that we're going to have to come up with. Or I guess an additional 10 because the $15 million is already going to be allocated to that. Is that correct?
Yes, we would have to sustain it. So, we'll have to go through some of the exercises that we're going through now. So, just like each year, we look at enrollment, and we determine if we need to make some adjustments through attrition. We look at if we need to change some of our staffing models. We look at how can we reduce costs, you know, operationally? How can we avoid costs? So, all of the things that we've done to get us to the point that we are at now, we'll continue to have to do those sort of things if our enrollment patterns don't shift in a different way.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So, continuing with raise option 1, you'll see that it accounts for all classroom teachers getting a flat amount based on their years of experience, and it also takes into consideration increasing the starting teacher pay up to $65,205. And then all other staff members would get a 1% pay increase. So, that's raise option 1. Raise option 2, very similar, accounting for all of the classroom teachers based on years of experience. And the difference here is that all other staff would get a 2% of the midpoint. Let me be clear by saying of the midpoint. 2% of the midpoint for their pay group for all other staff. And then similarly, raise option... Well, let me, let me slow down because I need to go back. Raise option 1 would cost us a total of $15.8 million to implement, okay? Raise option 2 would cost us about $17.7 million, just over that, to implement. And then raise option 3, as you can see, the difference here is 3%, and it would cost us about $19.6 million to implement. Now, moving to option 4, you'll see the change here is that we have included all staff members on the, what we call the TO7, TO8 salary schedule. So, in essence, it adds in nurses, librarians, campus coaches, et cetera. So, you'll see those groups described over in red to the right of the chart. So, we've shifted them from the all other staff up to where the classroom teacher counts are accounted for and giving them a flat amount as a compensation increase, and then keeping everyone else at a 1% compensation increase. And that would cost us about $16.7 million to do so. So, again, very similarly, in option 5, the only change there is increasing the all other staff percent of midpoint increase to 2%. And then option 6 is changing it to 3% of the midpoint for all other staff, with the financial impact being $20.2 million. So, just as a quick dashboard view so you can see all of the options on one page, if you go to page 15 of your presentation or of the PowerPoint that you have in hand, you'll see here how options 1, 2, and 3 are very similar. The only difference is that all other staff are getting a different percent increase based on the midpoint. Likewise, options 4, 5, and 6 are very similar, with the difference being all other staff getting a 1%, 2%, or 3% increase based on the midpoint. You'll see the estimated cost there, but one of the other takeaways you could see there is the proposed budget deficit as a result of implementing each of the different options. And so, when we presented the budget or when I presented the budget last month, I showed a projected $29.6 million deficit based on current law. And we know that the law has changed, right? And we're still waiting on guidelines to help us understand the degree to which different laws have changed. But needless to say, each of these options does show that we'll be able to implement the required raises because they're giving us the money for it and reduce the deficit to some degree, right? Because none of these options are more than $29.6 million. But needless to say, they are $20 million, okay?
Can you kind of, can you help me understand the midpoint, the difference of the midpoints? Because we have new board members, and I'm blaming him for this one.
Blame the new board member? That's the president.
I know, I know.
Okay.
I'll take it on myself.
So, when we talk about midpoint, we're talking about the average salary for a group. So, if the average salary is, I'm going to say $70,000, and you make, already make $74,000, your raise is not going to be quite 2% because you're already above the midpoint. But if your salary is less than the midpoint, if you will, then you'll be closer to that 2% versus someone who's already over the midpoint. So, it's the average of that group.
Those midpoints are published in our salary book, so you'll be able to see what the midpoints are for each different pay grade.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, before I ask for your feedback, I also want to show what some of our neighboring districts are doing so that you will have just a ballpark indication of those that have made decisions and some that have not made decisions. So, still are decided, you'll see them noted at the bottom, but there are others that have, you know, decided that they're going to give, of course, the required compensation increases. And so, they're ranging from, as you can see, 1% to 4%. There are a few districts, like I believe Fort Bend, that's giving a very small raise amount, but they've instead elected to give stipends. So, they're giving their full-time staff a $1,200 stipend, one-time stipend, instead of a compensation increase, if you will. Also, they are giving two Employee Wellness Days. There are others that haven't quite made a decision yet as well. You'll see here also noted in red the districts that have indicated that what their new teaching starting salaries are. So, you'll see those noted there. But again, just wanted to share with you with what other districts are thinking and what they are doing. I will also share that in talking with some of my counterparts in other school districts. Most are saying, okay, for the required compensation increases, you know, we have to do that. And then everybody that's not a part of that required compensation group where the state has given us the full amount for their raise, they're just getting a percent of the midpoint, if you will. So, that's been the consensus. But of course, there's always going to be outliers that make decisions that are based on their own unique district needs. So, before I go on, I'd like to pause here and get your feedback to determine our next best steps as we look to make certain that we are honoring what you think we should do as it relates to compensation increases for the upcoming school year.
So, if we went with the $1,500 for the zero-to-two-year teachers, that would make our starting salary be $65,205, just for that chart, if that helps you guys see where we would fall in that range?
Yes, that's correct.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Page 15?
Yes, sir.
This is for all classroom teachers that are not getting the special compensation, right?
Yes, 1 and 2.
Your option, are you referring to option 1?
No, I'm on page 15.
Yes, sir, page 15.
Talking about option 2.
Option 2, yes, sir.
That's for all teachers that are under, that are not getting a raise the way this thing's set up.
So, option 2 includes all classroom teachers only. So, classroom teachers with zero to two years of experience, three to four years of experience, or five or more years of experience. All classroom teachers.
But those that are getting $2,500 and $5,000 aren't in this 2%?
They are not in the 2% because they're getting the flat $2,500 or the flat...
Got you.
Yes, sir.
Now, if you do a flat amount, 2% on item 5?
On option 5?
I'm asking, which one of these would take care of? Number 5. 3% is for all those, right? Not midpoint, but 2%.
Are you talking about raise option 5?
No, you got to get back on...
Go back to page 15?
Page 15.
Yes, sir. And then...
Option 5.
Option 5, yes, sir. You're asking me if it includes what?
This includes 2% for all teachers.
So, the teachers are not in that 2%. That 2% is everybody else. So, that's from a bus driver to an instructional paraprofessional, a principal, it's all those other groups. The teachers are included in the flat amount, which would be either $1,500, $2,500, or $5,000 based on their years of experience.
If they have less than two years, we're talking about 2% there as one of the options?
If a classroom teacher has less than two years of experience, they would get $1,500 in that group, $1,500. in that group, $1,500. If a classroom teacher has less than two years of experience.
Really, it's that it's over 2%, right? So that just, just in doing the math, basically, the teachers with any level of experience are getting quite a bump.
So about 2%, 2% is about $1,500 for a teacher. That is correct. And so $2,500 is about 4%.
Right.
And that $5,000 is about nearly 7% for a teacher. So that's, you know, significant.
Right, okay.
Well, that's money we want to spend regardless.
Oh, it's going to great stuff.
That's not the group I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
I'm talking about the other souls that are working hard.
Yes, sir.
All them to the top, you know?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm talking about.
So to give you an example, Mr. Marshall, for a custodian, to get a 2% increase, you know, the midpoint, that would be about a $300 pay increase. For a bus driver, 2% would be about $570. And for, I'm going to say, a nurse, that would be, 2% would be about $1,400. And so that's just to give you some context for different employee groups. Of course, it's different from group to group, but I just wanted you to have some context there to kind of know what those raise amounts would look like for those groups.
You're talking midpoint, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So from a planning perspective, Dr. Lopez?
I was just going to say that today we did get that Laporte was doing a 4%, so we got that today.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Since you've been in touch with other districts, you have any idea what they're doing?
You know, we're pretty tight-lipped about our deficits, I will say that. Depending on, you know, I would say Aldine as an example, their current deficit is about $48 million. Fort Bend is, I think, in the 30s. I mean, these, this funding that is helping to reduce deficits, but I don't know, maybe Barbers Hill is, you know, having a balanced budget and breaking even, but from my understanding, most of us will have some degree of a deficit.
Every person I've talked to is going to have a deficit budget. It may not be to our level, but every person I've talked to is going to have a deficit budget.
Yeah, any district cannot have one.
Correct.
Starved for two years already.
Mm-hmm, longer. Mm-hmm. I totally agree.
Got to take care of our people.
Yes, sir.
Agree with that. Have such a wonderful staff.
I've got everybody, guys that clean the building, the guy that takes care of the yards, the mechanics, the people that repair things. With all, everybody's involved with the kid, with our students, no matter what their job is. It really comes down to that. That's why I think you have to take care of them.
Yes, sir.
Looking for a number?
I'm looking for what option you all would prefer or what you would consider so that we can move forward with developing that for our 2526 budget planning process.
Now, of course, we would bring that back to the June 24th board meeting, correct? And then we would vote on it. You would have an opportunity to vote on it. We just need an idea because we've given six options, and so we need kind of to narrow that down to where, to where we could actually develop the budget. And we have a short window turnaround time because it's, it's quick.
So what I'm, what I'm asking is that we, you give us some indication of what you'd like to do, and then we create a budget around that indication. But for budget adoption next week, I'd like to propose to continue with our regularly scheduled budget adoption under current law and then amend the budget in July because we'll have more information about what we need to do, and we have to make the changes by law. So it'll give us more time to make those changes. So we'll bring back a budget amendment that would include the required compensation increases and anything else that you all have said that we're going to do. But for next week, to get us through the budget adoption process, you, the presentation will say $29.6 million as the deficit because I'd like to keep it with your permission that way because it makes it cleaner so that we don't have to keep amending and making adjustments when we know that rulemaking is still happening with HB2 implementation. So that's my, that is my request.
So as far as today goes, you want to hear from each one of us which of these options we like, so we'll give you an idea of something you can come back with us for project. I get what you're saying, okay?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
To be clear, so on the 45 per ADA that we're getting on, I guess, some of the T7, T8 staff, so nurses, campus coaches, librarians, all those, options four, five, and six are significantly greater, obviously, than the, than the 45. But we are receiving that for each of those categories hypothetically?
Yes, so it's not for categories, it's for the number of students and average daily attendance. So we have about 45,000 students.
Which is all put into.
It's just, yeah, you calculate that times $45, and that's how they come up with just a dollar amount. And they're saying that you have to spend this minimum dollar amount on compensation increases. And what, we're going to exceed that regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question.
Yes, and thank you. I don't think I said vote, but.
No.
We're just getting feedback, discussion. Okay, thank you.
Keep everybody out of hot water.
Yes, I'm getting in trouble over here.
That's okay. We can also do where I, I can call individual board members too if they want, if they need just a few more a day or so to look at it. So I'll be happy to call individuals if that's better.
Okay, however you want to proceed, I just wanted to be able to communicate and share the information and provide it to you so you would know how to give us your feedback.
Yeah.
So I'm going to move forward, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I've kind of already said what I wanted to say, but as we think about next week and we approach the end of the fiscal year, I am recommending that we, again, we adopt the budget based on the current law, that, because again, we're getting board docs together, we're getting the board agenda together. I've been driving Joan crazy, I'm pretty sure about that. And so we want to make sure we can move forward, we're getting our budget adopted on, at next week's proposed budget and proposed tax rate hearing that we'll have. And then we will amend the budget in July to reflect the new laws that will be reflective of the raise requirements, the information, the raise option that the board would like to have in place. And then if any tax rate changes need to be made, we'll, we'll make that at that time. Anything else? Any additional questions or concerns?
No, I think I'd just like to look at this just a little bit more.
Okay.
All the hard work in your people.
Okay.
We greatly appreciate every one of you, heck, yeah.
Coming with six options, I would go to her and she, I said, can you do a 1%? Then can you do a 2%? Can you do a 3%? And she's been great the whole time, being gracious, and so we appreciate you tremendously.
Absolutely, happy to serve.
Well, you know, and it's so difficult because I was sitting in a legislative update on Thursday, and then again on Friday, and what they told us on Thursday was one thing, and then it changed on Friday. So I can't even imagine what you're, you and your team, and they're kind of laughing and chuckling over there because they, they've been through that, they see it, so.
I'm driving them crazy.
Well, no, the state is, is driving us crazy because they don't have the, a clear, concise, you know, agenda of what we're trying to do here. And at the end of the day, we're just trying to, to do what's best for the kids.
Absolutely.
So.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Sullivan?
For special education, we, we hope to see an increase because they're, they're doing our special education funding differently based off of the intensity of the services that we're providing, but that does not start until 2627. So we hope to see that underfunded mandate that we have now be funded, it won't fund us whole, I don't think, but it'll get us closer. So we do hope to see that for next year.
Any other discussion? All right, we're to the adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 5:56.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.